Hello, welcome to cases court. In the name of very important topic we are going to talk about. Planning Commission and its own Neeti Ayog. Okay, about 12th level, degree level, prelims, mains, case. All of them are important. The most important topic is this Planning Commission and Neeti Ayog. Any questions we will discuss them. Okay, in this class, we have a lot of questions to discuss. If you have not read it yet, you can write it down. Okay, let us start. Planning Commission and Neeti Ayog. Everyone has heard of that word. That word is the word of the word. What is the meaning of that? That Sutra, right? That Sutra Commission. Okay, what is that Sutra Commission? I am just saying in general. Just remember that. Then we will discuss the questions. Okay, so the word of the word. This Panjaviya Pada Diga are included. A lot of people from the country. The same as the big senate. The lives of the people. They need to eat. A lot of very important Pada Diga. That Sutra is done. The Indian government's official. To say it again. An official. Or we can say an advisory committee. This is the word of the word. Okay, the first president was Jive Haral. It was in the year 1995. March 15th. That Sutra Commission. We have the Planning Commission. We have the rule. Okay, so this is the position of the head. That is the age. Is it the age? At that time, the president was the head of this Planning Commission. Okay, because of that, the first head of the Planning Commission. Jive Haral Nehru. He is the first head of the Planning Commission. Okay, then what happened? In 2014, what is it doing? The Modi government came to the head. This Planning Commission is established. As its complement, a Neeti Ayog is created. Okay, so this Sutra Commission is needed. A little more important day is Neeti Ayog. Who is the head of this? The president. But here is a Chief Executive Officer. What is it? CEO. The word of the word. This Planning Commission is different. There is no CEO in the Planning Commission. But when Neeti Ayog came, there is nothing else. The same as the CEO. Who is coming to Neeti Ayog? Okay, so what is Neeti Ayog established? In 2015, January 1st. Okay, so we will discuss the Neeti Ayog. So who is there in Neeti Ayog? The head of Neeti Ayog. Who is the head? He is the head of Neeti Ayog. Okay, because of that, who else is there? What is it? All the governments are the main ministers. Okay, the same as the state. The left and governor are the members of this. The members of Neeti Ayog. Okay, because of that, we should be grateful. The head of Neeti Ayog is a official. If you want to ask, who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Okay, the head of Neeti Ayog is a official. Because of that, there will be a lot of members. Okay, maximum 45. There will be a lot of members. Because of that, there are 24. Maximum 24 members in Neeti Ayog. Okay, because of that, there are 4 non-legal members. You have understood it. 2 temporary. 4 years. Then 4 non-legal members. Then who is there? The CEO, Chief Executive Officer. There will be many. This is what Neeti Ayog is about. Okay, so these are the things. Planning Commission and Neeti Ayog. We have understood them. Then we will go to the questions. Okay, so what is the first question? In the world, the first official. The official of the official. Who is the country? Soviet Union. It is the first time in India. In the world, the first official of the official. That Sutra is what is the word of the word. Okay, so national official of the official. Soviet Union. Because of that, we have understood it. The Indian official of the official. Who is standing in the country? Russia. If there are options, Russia is the option. Okay, Russia is standing. Okay, let us go to the next question. In India, the friends of friendship are established. Friends of friendship is what? Economic reforms. New economic reforms. That is the degree level syllabus. It is a topic that is coming again. We have a separate class. The playlist is available in economics. Just watch it. Very important. Okay, so what is the friendship of friends in India? The class is taught by the students. What is it? In 1991, the friendship of friends started in India. In India's friendship, the most important person among the friends. He is Vishveshaya. In India's friendship, the most important person among the friends. He is Vishveshaya. Okay, let us say who is the father of the official in India? Who is the father of the official in India? He is Vishveshaya. Okay, clear? Now, the word of the official in India. The most important person among the friends. What is the name of the book of the official? What is it? The Planned Economy of India. Okay, the next person asked. The Planned Economy of India. Who is the author? He is Vishveshaya Reditcha. The word of the official. The most important person among the friends. That is the book. The Planned Economy of India. When was the book published? If you ask, it is in 1934. Okay, look. Who is the father of the Indian engineering? He is Vishveshaya. We have said the father of the official in India. If you ask, who is Vishveshaya? Because of that, who is the father of the Indian engineering? Who is it? He is Vishveshaya. So what is the Engineer's Day? The Engineer's Day is September 15th. Why is it September 15th? That is the birthday of Vishveshaya. Because of that, we took the engineer's day. Clear? Okay. Now, the next question. Who is the national planning committee? National Planning Committee. Here is the word of the word. As its complement, the official committee. The national planning committee. Who is the first to be established? Who is it? Subash Chandra Bose. When is it? In October 1938. Okay, so who is the national planning committee? Subash Chandra Bose. When is it? In October 1938. Okay, so who is the first chairman of the national planning committee? Jive Haral Nehru. The first chairman of the national planning committee is Jive Haral Nehru. This is the national planning committee. A planning and development department is starting in India. What is it doing? A planning and development department is starting. What is it? In 1944. Now, if you want to know more detail. What is the Indian economy? Refer to the books. These are the questions. I have translated them. So maximum all the questions are included. Okay, so you can understand the details. We have discussed the Neeti Ayog. The statements are included. Now, we will discuss the Bombay plan. Or what is the Sarvodaya plan? We have included the text book. Just read it. Okay, so what is the planning and development department? It is in 1944. This is the planning and development department. An advisory planning board committee. It is finished in 2 years. What year is it? 1946. Okay, so this is the national planning committee. Who is the first to be established? Who is the chairman of the first? After that, we come to India. What is it? The first department of the planning and development. The first department of the planning and development. It is in 1944. After that, the advisory planning board. It is in 1946. Okay, so after that, the leaders of the country. All of them are together. A plan. Our economic event is ready. That plan is known. The Bombay plan is known. Now, the Bombay plan is established. It is the age. 44, 45. If there are only 44 options. That is the answer. Okay, so the Bombay plan is established. It is in 1944. Now, how many people are in the Bombay plan? Who is the one who is established? 8 people. 8 official. The Bombay plan is what? It is established. Okay, so the names of the officials are very important. The one who is studying the degree level. Who is the teacher? Like Berla. These names are not forgotten. Teacher and Berla are not forgotten. Okay, because of that, Ardesheer Dalal. What is it? Ardesheer Dalal. Lala Sri Ram. Okay, Lala Sri Ram. Kastur Bhai Lal Bhai. Ardesheer Darabsho Shroff. How many? Adi Shroff. That is what we are saying. Okay, Adi Shroff. Because of that, Purushothamendras, Takurdas. What is it? Our John Mathai. Okay, these names are very important. Some other names. Who is the person in the Bombay plan? Or who is the official? So just remember these names. Okay, now look. Next is Gandhi's Pada Di. Before the Gandhi. Gandhi's plan. Who is before? Sriman Narayan Agarwal. Who is Sriman Narayan Agarwal? What year is it? Gandhi's plan. What year is it? In 1944. Okay, now the people's plan is established. All the plans are there. The planning commission came. There are a lot of plans. One is the Bombay plan. After that, Gandhi's plan. Okay, what is it? People's plan is there. They give ideas. The name is the people's plan. Gandhi's plan. Sarvodaya plan. Okay, so who is the people's plan? If you ask, he is E M N Roy. What year is it? 1945. Now, Gandhi's plan is in 1944. He wrote it in the order. Okay, Gandhi's plan is there. Before the Bombay plan. Okay, Bombay plan is there. 1944. Where do you start? 44 is over. Now, 44 is over. Gandhi's Pada Di is there. After that, the people's plan is there. 45 is there. After 50 is Sarvodaya Pada Di. It is in January 195. So, there are a lot of things in Sarvodaya Pada Di. All of them were modified. It is the planning commission. Okay, so who is the Sarvodaya Pada Di? Jaya Prakash Narayan. Okay, let us move on. If it is Gandhi's Pada Di, Narayan Agarwal. If it is Sarvodaya Pada Di, Jaya Prakash Narayan. Now, what is the word of the word? It is very important. A lot of people repeat it. It is the word of the word. The word of the word. Neeti Ayog is established. The word of the word. 1955, March 15th. March 15th. Move on. March 15th. Okay, now, who is the first head of the planning commission? We have said the first. Who is the president? The president was Jive Haral Nehru. Okay, now, let us look. Who is the first official of the planning commission? Who is the first official of the planning commission? Gul Sarilal Nande. Who is it? Gul Sarilal Nande. Okay, who is the official of the planning commission? Who is the name of the official? Who is the president? Who is the official of the planning commission? This is very important. The next question is. A lot of people have asked. Who is the official of the planning commission? National Development Council. NDC. A lot of people have asked. NDC. Who is the official of the planning commission? NDC. Okay, so who is the official of the planning commission? Narendra Modi. The word of the word. Because of that, who is the official? Narendra Modi. Okay, so who is the official of the official? Mondeng Singh Alu Vali. Mondeng Singh Alu Vali. The official of the planning commission. Okay, let us move on. Now, we will look at the NDC. When we study the Neeti Ayog. It is very important. It is the word of the word. Okay, NDC. National Development Council. The date of the National Development Council was in 1952. August 6. The word of the word. The NDC was in 2 years. After 1952, August 6. Now, who is the first meeting of the NDC? August, September, October, November. That is November 8th, 9th. The first meeting of the NDC is in 1952. When you come to the NDC. You come to 50. 52 is there. Okay, the NDC was in 52. 52 is also there. November is the first meeting. Okay, who is the first person in the NDC? The president. All the governments are the main ministers. The NDC is there. Okay, after that, we will study the Neeti Ayog. Because of that, the NDC has a new government. The name of the government is what? Governing Council. Okay, who is the governing council? Governing Council. Now, who is the last meeting of the NDC? It is in 2012. What is it? The NDC is the last meeting. That is, it is in 2014. Neeti Ayog. I mean, the word of the word. But before that, it is in 2012. The NDC is there. The last meeting is in 2012 December. That is what we have understood. The last meeting of the NDC is in 2012 December. Now, who is the official of the word? In 2014, August 15th. The word of the word. Who is the official of the word? Who is the official of the word? It is in 2014, August 15th. Now, who is the official of the word? Neeti Ayog. Okay, Neeti Ayog is established. It is very important. It is in January 1st. Now, who is the official of the word? Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? It is very important. Move on. Date. Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? It is in January 1st. Okay, who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Okay, so if you are wrong. You will choose. National institution for transforming India. If you have learned it. Write it. Okay, so we will not forget. Okay, so if you have learned it. National institute for transforming India. Or National institution for transmitting India. All of them are there. Last, you will ask. Because of that, it is very important. What is Neeti? National institution for transforming India. Okay, National institution for transforming India. Okay, these two words are clear. Now, who is the chairman of Neeti Ayog? The president. Neeti Ayog is established in January 1st. After that, the next month is February 8th. What is the official of Neeti Ayog? The official of Neeti Ayog is in 2015, February 8th. Who is the first chairman of Neeti Ayog? Who is the chairman? Okay, who is the first chairman of Neeti Ayog? Narendra Modi. Okay, who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Okay, who is Narendra Modi? Now, where is the headquarters of Neeti Ayog? New Delhi. Okay, New Delhi. If you ask, it is not direct. All of them are added. A statement. If it is wrong. Or right. Who is asking? Because of that, we will ask the statements. Okay, so who is the headquarters of Neeti Ayog? Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Narendra Modi. Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Rajiv Kumar. Rajiv Kumar. Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? Rajiv Kumar. Okay, so who is the official of the word? The word of the word. Chief executive officer. Who is the official of the word? That is CEO. Okay, who is the CEO of Neeti Ayog? Amitabh Khand. Who is the CEO of Neeti Ayog? Amitabh Khand. Okay, who is the CEO? Sindhu Sri Gullar. Okay, Sindhu Sri Gullar. Who is the CEO of Neeti Ayog? Okay, clear? Other questions? Now, who is the first plan of the word? If you ask, who established it? The next year is 1991. The first plan is established. Now, who is the grand innovation challenge? Who is the official of the word? Because of that, move on. Grand innovation challenge. Grand innovation challenge. The things related to India's development. The power of India. The power of India. First, take it. Take innovations. Move forward. That is the grand innovation challenge. Okay, so that is the official of Neeti Ayog. Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? We have said. Who is the official of Neeti Ayog? The president. Okay, who is the official of GBK Rao Committee? Who is the official of GBK Rao Committee? The word of the word. Who is the official of GBK Rao Committee? The word of the word. Okay, so who is the official of Neeti Ayog? The main hub is two. Who is the two hubs? Team India Hub. Because of that, Knowledge and Innovation Hub. Team India Hub. Because of that, Knowledge and Innovation Hub. It is very important. What is Team India Hub? The name of the central government. The state government. The Indian states. Because of that, the central government. That is the participation. That is the Team India. Because of that, Knowledge and Innovation Hub. This is the research. The person. What is it? The creation of the. The need for the creation of the. That is the think tank capabilities of our institutions. Okay, that is correct. All of them are in a group. The creation of the. What is required? What is researched? What is wrong? The mentality of the creation. The think tank capability. So, the first institutions are. Knowledge and Innovation Hub. Okay, so Team India Hub. Because of that, Knowledge and Innovation Hub. Clear? Okay, the full-time organizational framework will include in addition to the prime minister as the chairperson. Okay, who is the team of Neeti Ayog? Because of that, if you ask. Sometimes the statement. Sometimes the question. The Neeti Ayog. Maximum 3 temporary. The people are named. Or any statement. Wrong. Okay, correct. What is the Neeti Ayog? Who is the prime minister? Who is the chairperson? The head. The official. Who is appointed? The president. Then, who are the members? Full-time members. When it is full-time, there are 45. When it is full-time, there are 45. Now, part-time members. The maximum is 2 people. Part-time members. Okay, because of that, ex-official members. Okay, what is it? Non-legal members. Okay, that is 4 people. The maximum is 4. If it is part-time, 2 people. If it is ex-official, 4 people. Okay, because of that, there is a CEO. How many people are there? What is the word of the word? Sometimes we have a question. When the statement comes. The word of the word. Eight members. They are talking. So, that is the way. We will get the answers.[1518.84] अक्का परिन उडायरन ना सो आवर रीडील नमक आंसर तेटी पोवर द मॅक्सिमम इप्प तन्हा इदर कॅल्कुलेट जेम करेक्ट आउट रे एन नव लेंगल वरक करेक्ट आउट रे कालावती उन खोडत इन ला करेक्ट कोल्फिकेशन परिन इतला ओके अब आवर रीडील तन्हा निधि आयोग इन अकान निधि आयोग ना परिन ओर पत्त पंद्रह वेर आवर ऑलमोस्ट लेवल पिन ओर सेक्टरल एट रेट पेर वेण ना करेक्टाईट मनसला के वेचिरिक्या ओके अदर्द चोदित नोकू विच ऑफ डी फॉलोइंग बॉडीज डस नॉट फाइंड मेंशन इन डी कांस्टिट्यूशन इदर 2013 ले सिविल सर्विस एक्सामेंट ओर चोदिया आयरन नो एंड आयुन विच ऑफ डी फॉलोइंग बॉडीज डस नॉट फाइंड मेंशन इन डी कांस्टिट्यूशन कांस्टिट्यूशन इंडियन बर्णकडनील परिन इतला एदक एंड दान मेगल एदक कमिटीकल अक्का आणि ओला द एंड चोदित चाल एदक्या आणि नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल एंड नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल आणि एनडीसी ना परिन एनडीसी ने कुरचु कांस्टिट्यूशनल परिन टन टो अद्वोल अप्लानिंग कमीशन ने कुरचु परिन टन टो अद्वोल सोनल काउंसिलस ने कुरचु परिन टन टो सिलेक्ट डी करेक्ट आंसर यूजिंग डी कोड डू नॉट आणि परिन रिकन द गेट अब इदर मेंशन चेदर तिला तवर आणि नमक परिन द दार्ततल ई मून वेर कुरच द एंड डीसी एंड चेन ला कांस्टिट्यूशनल एनडीसी ने कुरच उन बरिन ला अद्वोल तन्हा प्लानिंग कमीशन ने कुरच उन तन्हा बर्णकडनील परिन ला सोनल काउंसिलस ने कुरच एंड चेदर तिला बर्णकडनील बरिन ला सो आंसर ना आयोग वन टू एंड थ्री अदम वन तन्हा मेंशन चेदर तिला अदर्द चोदित नोकू कांसिड फॉलोइंग स्टेटमेंट इतन अंडा 13 क्वेश्चन आणि ओके नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल इस एन ओर्गन ऑफ डी प्लानिंग कमीशन एंड दान नेशनल डेवलपमेंट काउंसिल दान नमल डा एनडीसी ना परिन द द प्लानिंग कमीशन डा ओर ओर्गन आणि एंड दान परिन रिकन द अंग आणो अल्लाह पगर एंड दान प्लानिंग कमीशन नियंत्रिक ना आयोग एंड एनडीसी ले अल्लाह डी प्लानिंग कमीशन डा ओर ओर्गन अल्लाह ओके अद्वोल डी इकोनॉमिक एंड सोशल प्लानिंग स्केप डी कंकरन लिस्ट एंड द कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ इंडिया इन द बर्णकडनील ई प्लानिंग सोशल इकोनॉमिक प्लानिंग इन कुरचु सोशल प्लानिंग इन कुरचु परिन रिकन द कंकरन लिस्टल आणि एंड दान परिन रिकन द आणो अद्वोल तन्हा एंड दान डी कांस्टिट्यूशन ऑफ इंडिया प्रिसक्राइब्स डेट पंजायत शुड बी असेंट डी टास्क ऑफ डी प्रिपरेशन ऑफ डी प्लान्स फॉर इकोनॉमिक डेवलपमेंट एंड सोशल जस्टिस पंजायत आर एंड दान सोशल जस्टिस जस्टिस न्यू मद्दल इकोनॉमिक डेवलपमेंट